This conference will now be recorded.
Where is Fred? Oh, there he is right there. Okay, welcome. Here we go. Tonight is Tuesday, September 22nd, but in fact, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Tonight, everybody with a public hearing, and then at the end, we also hopefully can have some other business to discuss too. Getting right, without further ado, getting right away. First item in the public, we proposed amendment to the Darien zoning regulations, COZ number four, 2020. It's a site plan application number 128B as a boy, special permit application number 314-711, Inc., 306 Boston Post Road. Propose to man sections 210, 755, 904, and 1056, Darien zoning regulations relative to motor vehicle service stations, common including gas. The intent to propose regulation amendments are to distinguish gas stations from repair shops and to modernize standards to reflect customary accessory convenience store and food related offerings. The full text of proposed amendment is on file and available to Town Clerk's office and in the Planning and Zoning Office for inspection and online at www.darienct.gov backslash P P Z C pending applications. I said Doc every proposal to raise existing Duchess Restaurant on the site and we developed a site as a 7/11 gas station with associated convenience retail, an accessory quick service restaurant and a new 4,050 square foot building and to perform related site development activities. 12 self-service fueling positions with an overhead canopy would occupy the site. The 1.04 plus minus acre subject property is located on the south side, south slash east out of Boston Post Road, approximately 125 feet north slash east of its intersection with Bridge Road. And it's shown on the assessors map number 32 as number nine in the service business zone. As you may have understood from the description, this is the existing Duchess quote unquote fast food drive through restaurant. It's right at the entrance to the I-95 entrance ramp and next to an office building on the post road. The plan is to knock it down and rebuild it as a 7/11 store. Jeremy, can you give us a quick overview, please?
Sure. The application, as Steve mentioned, consists of three parts. The first part is zoning text amendments, which the applicant is going to describe to us. For reference, Town of Darien has not had a new gas station in over 25 years. So the gas station regulations, when we read through them with the applicant, we noted that they're a little outdated in terms of their requirements and they're called rigidity, times have changed relative to how gas stations used to operate. So the first aspect you can look at is the tech zoning text amendments to a number of sections of the regulations. In addition, you can look at the site plan pursuant to section 1020 and the special permit application pursuant to section 1,000 of the regulations. So we're going to first cover the zoning and then site plan, special permit, cover stormwater, and then traffic and parking at the end.
The only resident, if that's the proper word, in my time living in Darien is the standard gas station that's on the corner of Heights Road and West Avenue. That used to be a three bay quarter, you know, or regular gas station service center. They converted three of the bays, all three bays into a convenience store and there's parking on there. And you can't get a big gulp, I can tell you that. Tonight, we have Amy Sutians here on behalf of the applicant. Okay, Amy, welcome to the Darien Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm sorry, we're not meeting in person, but we're on Zoom or our former Zoom, which is go to meeting. The floor is yours.
Great. For the record, Amy Sutians attorney with Hurwitz, Sagrans, Hossberg, enough with offices in Milford here representing 7/11, the applicant. With me tonight, we have our whole development team that I think is probably taking up a good portion of the audience. We have and will be presenting James Bernardino from Bowler, who is our project engineer. James Owens, who is from HFA, and he is our project architect. Jason Adams, who's from McMahon Associates, and he is our traffic engineer. And then also with us on the call are Dorothy Fleischman and Christina Pimenta from 7/11 and Mark Donahoe, who is from EBI Consulting, our project management. So with that, Jeremy gave you a great overview of what we were going to walk through tonight. Because of the availability of your peer reviewer, Mike Galante, for scheduling purposes, we're going to do this a little bit out of order. We're going to, I'm going to walk you through the regulation amendment first, and then we will go through architecture, site plan, and then leave traffic to the end. So that way, hopefully, at that point, Mr. Galante will be able to join the call and hear that portion of the presentation. So it's hopefully all in the same window. But with that, I'm just going to turn over to our PowerPoint and go from here. So as the chairman noted, the site is the existing Duchess Restaurant and located at 306 Boston Post Road. Right there, as you can see, is the southbound exit 13 ramp or entrance ramp. And we are directly adjacent and in fact, the property line, if you can see right here, this is an area of wetlands. And so by way of background, we had an application to the EPC that was approved early last month. And we have an approval because the, there were some wetlands and a water course that is there in the area of the highway right of way. We are also before the architectural review board, we were there last week with respect to the review of the building and the proposed signage. We've had some comments from them and received a letter this afternoon that confirms what we've been working on since that meeting, which were some requests to add some visual interest and other design elements to the building. So when we get to the architecture portion, James will walk you through the basic building design, which and any revisions that that are underway. And then also because this is a gas station, we do need what's called the location approval from the zoning board of appeals in that capacity. They're acting as an agent of the state of Connecticut. So we were before the ZBA on that issue last week, as well as a variance request for the location and size of the pylon sign. Once we get done with the bulk of the presentation, I'll walk you back through that, but that is also within the scope of the ARB. There were also a few comments raised by the ZBA, so we will be addressing those comments and back to them. We're both, we're back before both ARB and ZBA at their October meetings. And then with respect to the town comments and peer review, I just wanted to highlight for you. We did receive comments from the fire marshal and we received, received those comments and have responded to those issues. Nothing of major substance. We also received comments from the Department of Public Works. As with the fire marshal, we reviewed those and have responded to him and addressed those. We received the peer review comments from Ty and Bond on the stormwater and other engineering issues. We're in the process of reviewing those. And when Jim comes up to talk about the site development, he'll touch on those issues, but as a quick preview, nothing that would have any major effect on the design of the site. And then we also have the peer review comments from, as I mentioned, Mike Galante. We received those at the end of last week. He asked us to look at a couple of things and Jason will touch on those items again that we are, we are working through. So with that, I'm just going to turn over, as I said, go through the regulation proposal. And then we'll go to architecture, site plan, traffic, and then come back to meet for signage. Hopefully that will give you, you know, we intend to give you a pretty comprehensive presentation on all the issues and hopefully that will address all the immediate questions that might have.
Aaron, this is Steve Alvani, the chairman. Can I just ask you a quick question? Amy, I'm sorry. With regard to the peer review and comments from people like Joe Kanas at Ty and Bond?
Yes.
Have the engineers had a chance to do their back and forth yet, or is it just?
We have. So the peer review traffic comments we got on, I think it was Thursday. So we've, we've looked at those and we're, we're starting, there was one round back and forth with data and that sort of thing. When we get to the stormwater comments, I'll let Jim go into details on that, but I do think those were pretty straightforward. Without, you know, our expectation is that given the continuation of the ZBA and ARB meetings until next month, we don't expect that tonight's hearing is going to be the only hearing. So to the extent that we have additional comments that we need to address and revise, we will continue working towards those with an eye toward having everything hopefully resolved by the time we get to the your October meeting.
No problem. Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure. So as Jeremy mentioned, we have been working with him and his staff for the last couple of months to look at the existing Darien regulations with respect to motor vehicle service stations. Because you haven't had a gas station in quite a long time, close to 30 years, we think, for a new, new station, we are trying to look at the regulations a bit more comprehensively and update those and make an important distinction between a modern day gas station and a repair facility. So what we have done in the regulation is to envision what I think everybody sort of thinks of as a modern day gas station. That includes a convenience store and some kind of often co-located food use. And then still maintain the existing framework that you have in the regulations, not only for motor vehicles, service stations, but also with respect to a number of uses where they, both the principal and accessory uses are permitted either through special permit or site plan approval. We do think that the regulation amendment that we're proposing is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is comprised of the zoning regulations and the zoning map. We're located in the SB zone, which is the service business. Frankly, it's exactly the type of use that the SB zone is intended to facilitate. It's a convenience use. It's something that everybody with a car needs. And this particular location at the 95 ramp and located on the Boston Post Road seems like it's the best of both worlds. Where we are located in that zone in a very convenient and useful location for the driving public. So with that, the turning directly to the proposed language, as we move forward, this is the version that was included in the application package. The proposed new language is included in underlined and any language when we get further on, that will be stricken, is shown in strike through. So with respect to the definition of motor vehicle service station, we wanted to make it clear, because the regulations were not, that a self-service gas station is specifically allowed. We are proposing this facility to be a strictly self-service facility. Then with respect to section 755, which is the accessory uses in the SB zone, we would allow or already allowed our quick service restaurants with a minimum of 1,200 square feet of indoor space for tables for seating. As you can imagine, that's quite a large requirement when the, when co-loaded with, co-located with a gas station or any other use. So what we've proposed is 100 square feet of indoor space with that co-location in a retail store and gas station. Section 904W with respect to parking, traditionally, Darien has not distinguished between a gas station, obviously, and a repair facility. And thus, any gas station has required disabled vehicle storage and additional parking for towing or other uses. Given this type of use, what we have done is create a new standard for something that is this type of use with a gas station and a co-located retail store and/or a quick service restaurant, which is to provide parking in accordance with that co-located use, whether it's retail and/or restaurant. And the reason for that is that if you think about the common sense approach to, approach to a gas station, you pull into a gas station, you pull up to the pump, you get your gas and you leave. If you make the decision to go into the store, you're going to, supposed to, pull away from the pump and into a parking space. So Darien has traditionally not counted the spaces at the pump as a parking space. And given that history, we did not want to introduce that as a, as a new concept, particularly because we didn't want to encourage people to violate, you know, state regulations about not parking at the pump. And so ultimately, the use that's generating the need for the parking space is the retail or restaurant use in the building. So we have called out the requirement that you park for the use in the building and not for the pumps themselves. When we get to the site plan, you'll see that what we're proposing here is 25 parking spaces. And that's based on the square footage of the, the building as retail and a portion of it as that restaurant use.
Can I, can I interrupt real quick? With regards to parking, for a 4,000 square foot typical 7/11, is 25 spaces larger or, or less than what you guys usually propose?
It's pretty, pretty consistent with the experience that the, the company has had in some of the larger stations that they've, they've upgraded or built new where there's, you know, intended to be more truck traffic or things like that. Those are obviously larger sites and have more parking, but for this size and scale of facility, it's, it's consistent with their, their experience.
Okay, thank you.
And, and we also, I should, by way of background, we did, this, the parking requirement was one of the things that we discussed at length with staff, looked at some of the surrounding towns, Norwalk, Fairfield, Greenwich, et cetera, to try and see if there was some kind of, you know, uniform application of the parking requirement for gas stations in the, call it region. There really wasn't. Some of it was based on number of pumps. Some of it was based on what we've, what we've proposed here. And that's frankly, consistent with what 7/11 has seen in the industry and our engineer has seen in other contexts for gas stations, that you're parking for the building, not for the pumps, because those pumps may never generate any kind of parking demand other than you fill up and you leave that space. So that's, that was the rationale for that. So then turning to principal uses requiring a special permit in 1056.1, what we have done, based on the fact that we would have retail sales of non-automotive products, you know, you go into the convenience store and you might pick up a whole host of things. We have clarified that language to just say auto body repair and painting shall not be permitted and struck that language about retail sales of, of non-related products. And then with respect to those clarifications, again, subsection A is intended to make it clear that you can have a self-service station, you can have a full service station, or you could have a combined anywhere in the town. And struck as a result, the language about only allowing self-service during other business hours. Again, just struck language in section B, just to make it clear that it applies to any gas station. And then subsection C was simply a housekeeping item because your signage regulations had been amended. And so we just inserted the new, the correct cross-reference. Then 1056.2, again, going back to the concept that we're trying to work within your existing framework. We added the provision from for quick service restaurant in accordance with section 755, which is the one for the SB zone, that the accessory use of that restaurant is a special permit. It's something that we have applied for in addition to the, to the gasoline station principal use. 1056.3 again is another distinguishing between true repair or service facilities from a gas station, which is that we don't need to have a building on this site for internal servicing and repair of automobiles. I think, you know, if you, and looking at the licensing for the various gas stations in Darien, most of the, many of the gas stations are co-located with a repair use. And so in that case, that would still require the, the necessary building, but if we're just being licensed solely as a gas station, that repair would, would not be required. Repair area would not be required. And then 1056.5 again, because we're not proposing and most modern gas stations don't propose to have vehicle storage or need areas for towing or, you know, cars that are dropped off in the morning, but won't be worked on till the afternoon. We've eliminated that storage area requirement when you're being operated solely as a gas station. So with that, that's the conclusion of the regulation amendment. If there are questions on the regulation amendment, I'm happy to answer those now before I turn it over to James, not sorry, not James Owens, who's our architect to go through the architecture and what's taking place on the site as far as the new building.
Okay, the answer to your question is yes. I would allow the commissioner's time. What I like to do is have an expert speak and give questions that have an expert speaking of questions. So.
Okay.
You have any questions at this point, sir?
I just have one and it's, it's more toward Jeremy, but the, what have we thought through what impact these zone changes are going to have on existing gas stations in town?
Well, it's, it's funny.
Is this going to cause problems if existing gas station owners take advantage of these changes? Is it going to cause, I don't know, parking, traffic, whatever, issues elsewhere in town?
No, you know, we, we talked about it a little bit. This is, in a way, it's loosening certain things. I was just telling Steve that it does pretty much eliminates the distinction between full service, self-service. There was a distinction in the regulations. I think we want to get away from that, at least in my opinion, instead of a call, micromanaging who's full service, who's self-service, which is specifically, you talk about in the regs, section 1056 specifically talks about that. But I think in a way, as Amy mentioned, I think one of the things that the regulation didn't do, that the regulation didn't very much, gas stations were viewed as, what Amy mentioned, a place where you bring your car, they have a towing operation, they have a car repair. Nowadays, many of the gas stations you see in Darien, if you think of Naroten Avenue or this Ifin or Gulf on Tokenique Road, 211 mobile across the street from this. More so, the trend is more so with convenience stores than with towing operations. As I mentioned, the only zone in town that allows gas stations is the service business zone. So there may be other gas stations in town that are non-conforming, but this is the, I think, the only zone that allows motor vehicle service stations and gas stations. I do not often think about that, Jim, but I do not foresee right off the top of my head, any conflicts, but that's something I'll think about between now and then.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's, we talked about that. You're right. Cause I mean, the, Amy did say it's going to be townwide. That's true. It's townwide, but you could have a gas station inside a SB zone anyway.
I'm thinking about existing gas stations. I mean, you know, the place across from, well, more or less, of course, from the Catholic church in Naroten. Or what used to be Chickatels across from the Jaguar deal. I mean, they want to put up a hamburger stand in the back or a soda fountain. I mean, I assume they can do it under these revised rules. Is that going to cause problems we haven't thought about? I mean, I just think somebody ought to think that through, probably on the staff, before we approve this thing. Before we approve the zone changes.
The other. Could just, one thing is that, as, as we know in the regulations, the accessory use, particularly the quick service restaurant, is a special permit use. So you, it would come to you with, as a special permit application. And I think you would have, you know, your, your ordinary special permit discretion to make a determination and certainly broader than if it was allowed as a principal use to, to, you know, evaluate traffic or impact on the neighborhood or something, something like that. I think this is, you know, that, the, between the limitations of stations located in not where they're in other zones where they're non-conforming, and then the fact that these accessory uses are special permits, I think, gives you, and was, was one of the things that we tried to address was to maintain the framework that you have, as I said, of, of many of these uses being special permit to give you that discretion, but also bring them up to modern standards. So if in fact, you know, somebody else, you know, I think Jeremy mentioned the, the mobile station drove diagonally across the street from us, closer to the, to the ramp or elsewhere on the, I think closer to the Norwalk line, there's another station. That one's co-located with repair, but if either of those facilities wanted to update, there's, there's that discretion. But I think that's, that's exactly where your zoning regulations want those things to happen.
Right. Plus, there's going to be a parking, there's going to be a parking requirement like that, one mobile station you're talking about, I don't think they have any striped parking. There's zero. Okay.
It might be faded.
Right. Jim, you good for now? You saying yes. You're just for your education, your guys thumbnails are really small tonight because you have the smallest computers, right? I can't see as well as I usually can. Jennifer, any questions?
I think I have, I mean, I sort of echo what Jim said, you know, I think oftentimes we don't think about the adverse effect or what will come down the line quick service wise. And that's what I've been trying to think of what iterations we could see. And I understand it's a special permit, but once we accept, once we approve one, the problem we have is that that's what we're told every time. Well, you already proved that one. So yeah, I echo what Jim said.
Karen, anything special?
Um, I echo what Jim and Jennifer said, which is the issue of revising regs to the needs and desires of a particular applicant, rather than taking a wholesale view, like a holistic approach to revising regulations based on the town, you know, plan of conservation and development. That being said, I appreciate the work and the thoughtfulness and the sort of mindfulness of how our regs are structured that applicants, you know, representatives did. I do think they appear to be very mindful of that stuff. So I'm not, that's just my general opinion and, you know, and thoughts on a applicant by applicant revision of regulations. Though my question in particular though is, so with the accessory use, and we'll put aside, I know we're, we're talking right now about the regulation revisions, but with the, and I, we're not at the special permit or accessory use stage right now, but so this is going to be a convenience store, a quick service restaurant, and with a reduction in seating and parking. So what are, when you take the size of the building, right, because you said, put aside the parking base, I mean, the, the fueling base, right? Because those shouldn't be parking. It violates state law and those should not be. It violates state law and those should not be considered towards, right? Even though we know in reality people will run in and run out. If they shouldn't, but I'm sure people do it. But again, it's in violation of state law. We're certainly not going to, you know, incorporate that kind of intention into our regulations. What are the parking per square footage or the parking per, you know, you know, because you have two businesses there essentially, right? A restaurant and a convenience store. And given the square footage, how many parking spots are there for the two businesses that are going to be located in that building?
Sure, so let me go back to my, we'll skip ahead to the PowerPoint slide that has the site plan. Just give me one second.
Thank you.
Quick, a quick answer is the parking is six per thousand, which is twenty five spaces divided by four thousand five, four thousand fifty square feet, which in the retail world is kind of high.
But it's not retail, it's retail and a restaurant.
Correct.
Restaurant world is that high?
If, yeah, it is. It's most.
I shouldn't have.
Five per thousand.
Say that again.
Most restaurants use it like five per thousand.
Five parking spots per thousand? Okay, and then most retail is what?
Is most retail is like three, is like four.
And so this is going to be six per thousand?
I mean, in my professional opinion, it looks like, and that's why I asked the question at the very beginning, it looks like it's overparked and not underparked.
And what's this, you can't see where I'm pointing. Okay, Amy, why don't you go through and go through?
Yeah, let me, let me hop back out so I can see you frankly. So, yeah, so just as a, as a quick preview, what we did for the parking was to apply the existing Darien regulations for retail use and for restaurant use to this building. So there's approximately, I believe it's four hundred.
Sixty five.
Yes, thank you. Approximately four hundred and sixty five square feet that we would allocate to restaurant use. And so we've parked that four hundred and sixty five square feet in accordance with the Darien restaurant parking requirements. And then just short of thirty six hundred square feet of retail space at Darien's retail parking requirement. And that results in a parking requirement of twenty two spaces. We have provided twenty five. And then that excludes the spaces at the pump. There are twelve fueling spaces. So practically speaking, if we want to ignore the fact that you're not supposed to park at the pump, thirty seven spaces on the site.
Thank you.
And we're going to, we'll dive more deeply into that when we talk about site plan.
I'm sorry.
We'll dive more deeply into that when your site plan guy.
Yes, yes, we can go through the parking chart on that particular slide.
But Jim, to go back to your original question and Jennifer with regards to where can this go someplace else? Like, if you think of the mobile gas station that's at Naroten Heights at Naroten West, there's no way for twenty five parking spaces on that piece of land. It would never fit. You know, that's where the land's going to control. But let's keep moving because we're on the same thing. Larry Warble and George Riley, any questions? Why don't you go first?
I just, it just occurred to me as we were talking about some of the language the square footage that you're providing and you're providing four hundred square feet plus. Looking at seven fifty five D, I wonder if the at least might follow the subsection because I see at least twelve hundred square feet of indoor space devoted to customer table or one hundred square feet of indoor. I wonder if at the at least should more clearly also define the one hundred square feet. But that's a net you can think about. Other than that, I'm clear.
Larry Warble?
Yeah, so my, my question again, a little more for Jeremy is more along the lines and we'll probably cover this more when we, when we get to traffic. But that's going to be a big focus for me. But in terms of the the twelve bays, do we have any, have we put any thought around the size of a property and the number of fueling bays a gas station has, or is it always been, you know, whatever they can, they can fit in?
Yeah, I don't remember seeing anything in the regulations limiting or restricting. I'm just looking through the regulations alone, but I do not believe that there's any current limits number of gasoline you can have at a station.
So it's, it's six pumps. It's six pumps and each pump has got two sides. That's where you go from six to twelve.
Right.
Examples are the Exxon station that's over by Shake Shack. And then the other big one is the other big one is going to be the mobile gas station with the car wash across the street from from us or the one we're talking about now. And then the third one is, it has, I think, six is Shell gas station Naroten Avenue. Those pumps are two different.
Right, I know, this is just a, it already is a very heavily trafficked section of Route one.
Right.
I just, you know, if it starts loading up, you've got twelve people getting gas, twenty five people getting slurpees. You know, it's something I want to spend some time thinking about.
That's, yeah, that's where if you had less bays and you had less parking, you'd have less traffic. That's why I thought it was overparked, but.
Yeah, that's.
Can you say that again, Steve? I didn't, if you have.
If you have less parking and less use, you're going to have less traffic.
Less parking, less use, less traffic.
Bays.
The space.
Less parking bays, with less gassing bays.
Yes.
Got it.
Gassing bays.
Although, Steve, aren't you, aren't you risking people who want to buy gas for which there is no open base filling out into the street?
Yeah, but there's also another gas station directly across the street.
Yeah, but what about the pricing?
True, that's true.
And it's difficult if you're in a large tractor trailer to cross the street. So they might just wait and just block up.
Yeah, we'll get into that, but don't forget, if you're a southbound or northbound tractor trailer, those guys are going to go to the Darien rest stops on I ninety five. Great. I think we answered all the questions on that.
We got some research to do relative to the question, so.
All right, we'll move on to the next item. So, okay, Amy, now we're good for the regulation amendment.
Okay, so I will go back to my PowerPoint and we're going to turn it over to James Owens, who is our project architect.
He works at Bowler Engineering.
No, I can introduce myself. Thanks, Jamie. So I'm James Owens with HFA Architects. It's probably some confusion because we've got another James here from Bowler. But anyway, so, so as Amy said, I'm the architect with this project and we partner with the development company EBI and Seven Eleven. Typically, the design architects that Seven Eleven work with, and in this case, the interior layout are actually located in Dallas, Texas. So we've been able to part with them to really lead the design of the exterior. And we're based out of Massachusetts. We've got a lot of experience working in New England. You know, we understand the regionalism and the vernacular. Traditionally, Seven Eleven has been moving in the direction of a more modern looking building with their stores. But for this project, Seven Eleven really wanted to take the approach that they want to design a building that fit the character of Darien and the community. So before I get into the overall design, I just, Amy's got some slides just to kind of compliment everybody to the site. And we're going to, I'm going to kind of quickly roll through the slide deck that we presented to the ARB last week. And I'll, I'll talk about things at a, at a high level. And and then at the end, I can kind of summarize what the overall feedback was that we received from the design review board and the approach that we're going to take moving forward. So, Amy, if you, yeah, so here, this is just kind of highlighting the existing Duchess that's on the site that will be demolished. And again, Bowler will kind of talk more explicitly about the site in our presentation. I'm just going to focus on the building. Again, we're doing this a little bit out of order, but I think that's okay. And next slide, Amy. So one of the, these are just street views. It sounds like everybody's very familiar with this, this section of Boston Post Road. So this would be looking on the left hand side is the existing Duchess. On the right hand side, you can see the Darien diner and an office building. So again, just, this is the presentation that we gave to the architectural review board to kind of familiarize everybody with the site and to give them, you know, some context of what we're, what we're designed for and in. Next slide, again, these are just showing some other views. So this is directly across the street from our site. This is the Darien diner. This is moving up the road further on Boston Post Road. Next slide, Amy. Immediately next door to us on the, to the right, you see that, that office building a little bit more modern. Because the Duchess diner is being removed, the new store is actually going to be in that void space that exists right now between the Duchess and the, and the office building. So again, you know, that building comes down. We go to the next slide. This is just further up on Boston Post Road. This is across the street, so there's an office building directly. Okay, correction, thank you. So that, that is direct, that's looking directly across the street. And to the right hand side, you can see the Darien diner. And then this is a little bit further up on Boston Post Road. The left hand side would be the, the office building that's next door to us. And on the right hand side, you can see just a retail center. And I think that there's one more slide for context that's looking, yeah, back down on towards the I ninety five off ramp. Again, the Duchess is on the right hand side and office building on, on the right as well. So and then the next, next slide. So this is just, this was the perspective view that we, that we showed. Again, I mentioned where, you know, we obviously are very much aware of, you know, trying to fit into the community. And so the, this was the design that was presented. It is, it's not addressing any of the comments. We presented a scheme that was what we felt was traditional with New England vernacular in terms of the massing, the, the materials that we're using, simple gable roof forms and with small dormers to, on the roof to help articulate the roof massing. The, the entrance is kind of very evident. You know, obviously because, excuse me, of the use of the building and the need for safety and visibility to the pumps, you know, we're trying to strike a balance between modern materials with a lot of glass and glazing on that long elevation, which would overlook the pumps, you know, versus, you know, a small opening. So again, you know, we're, we're trying to handle that very delicately. If you advance to the next slide, Amy, that's going to show just a head on view of, again, the way our building is orientated, the long top elevation is actually facing the fuel pumps. Again, the blue is depicting the glass that we have in the building. And then the bottom elevation is the street elevation, which is facing Boston Post Road, which, again, I'll kind of talk about in a minute. But the, the design review ARB design board was, was obviously very, you know, we, we had a lot of discussion about that and how we, how we treat that elevation, because that's our, that's our street facing elevation. But for the, the internal layer of the building, it doesn't lend itself to have a lot of glass and open windows and things like that. So again, the last slide here, Amy, if you can just show, this is the rear elevation that's would be our service side of the building and we're carving out a section within the gable roof to high mechanical equipment, refrigeration equipment, things like that. And then the bottom is the, is the rear elevation facing the, the stretch of I ninety five. So again, that, that was just kind of a, a high level overview of the design that we presented. So overall, there just in kind of summary of what the discussion was, there was a lot of discussion about the articulation and the detailing of the, of the building. The board was very vocal about creating a design that matched the architectural character of the community. And so, you know, we're, we're trying to strike this balance of the use of the building, the occupancy, the site constraints, and obviously meeting the design requirements of the design review board. So I, I think overall, you know, it's nice to see and present to boards that are very passionate about the community and, you know, a projects like this. And so, you know, that to me is always a positive sign. I think overall, there were no real concerns about the building configuration, that it was, you know, incorrectly cited or anything of that. It was, the focus really was on adding some detail and interest, which, you know, we talked about the, the amount of glass on the, on the long elevation facing the the canopy. And obviously, they understand the, the safety concerns with, you know, make sure we have visibility to the pumps. And, you know, so how can we break that, break the scale down and add some millions and articulate that? So again, it has some, some depth and interest in detail. We also spoke about the scale of certain elements like the entrance. If there's ways to maybe scale that down, play with the different materials to, again, just give it some richness and some, some interest. So, you know, we're going to, we're going to look at some of the lattice work that were presented. We're going to look at the street elevation that was presented to, again, try to, try to liven that up. And again, kind of create that, that street level character that they're looking for. They, they viewed the site very much as a gateway to the community. And so we recognize that. And we've had some thoughts with our, in discussions with our client about how we can strike that balance. And so our, our goal is to, you know, the, the designer review board was, was obviously very interested in seeing some design options and, and so they could see how we arrived at our design solution. So we're going to, we're going to do that with our client and work through some, some of those design ideas. Amy, if you want to jump ahead, just talk about this, this was just the material palette. Again, we presented more traditional materials with a brick veneer and siding and architectural shingles and some lattice elements that, again, we may revisit depending on how the, the overall design goes or we may keep. It's just kind of, you know, what's going to work overall. And then the next slide, I believe, is the, this was just showing an interior layout and, you know, we talked about how we were, you know, we had some limitations on where we could put, you know, real windows, but we, you know, we'll probably introduce some faux windows to help lighten that elevation up. And then the next, the last slide here, I believe, is.
Hold it right there for a second.
Sure.
One of the things I was going to ask for was the floor plan, because it was using in our packets.
We don't have it.
I just want to make sure the commission knows that the, when you talk about the rear of the building, to me, that's perpendicular with the street. So the rear of the building is actually the side of the building today. And that's going to back up to three, to three thirty office park. The front facade is the, the front of the building is on the right hand side of the, of the slide you're showing.
So where my cursor is moving, that is the side facing the fuel pump. This side is the front, fronting Boston Post Road. This is adjacent office building at the top of the screen. And then over here to the left of the screen is ninety five, just to orient everybody with the floor plan.
Okay, then someone's going to talk about landscaping at some point in time. Because relative to the grid of into Darien, if you're driving, I'm going to say, southbound, which is really down on I ninety five, I mean, on the post road, the front facade of this building is the first thing you're going to see.
Correct. Right, so just to go back, this is the facade facing the Boston Post Road.
The top, the top, no, but the top one, if you're driving southbound on I ninety five, post road.
Oh, if you're driving south, I, right, you, you'd have to look across the the site and, you know, there is some landscaping in the front. But yes, that's coming southbound, that's the frontage.
That's what you said.
Right, so the Seven Eleven sign, which is the bottom view, that's what you're seeing from the Dynamic Fitness, which is across the street in Darien.
Right, inconsistent, if you think about the Duchess elevation, it's, that's where the Duchess sign is as well.
Correct, but the Duchess's front door is on the bottom picture and Duchess's side door is on the top picture.
The Duchess, yes.
Okay, so your buildings, your building is hundred and eighty degrees. 180 degrees. No, because Duchess, it's the same, it's the same way, but it's.
Amy, Amy, do you want to?
I was going to say.
Am I going to stay planned? Yeah.
Eve, I think Kara has a question.
Go ahead Kara.
I mean, I just, I think it's important to note that you've talked about an office building that's really not an office building. And there's been no mention, and I read through your documents and all your materials, we talk about the north side, it's bound by dense wood, you know, dense wooded area. You're neglecting to acknowledge or talk about, it's a residential neighborhood directly across the street. It's a lot of kids, a lot of families. And I, I really find it kind of surprising, either it was deliberately not acknowledged and not part of your design plan or any of your preparations, or intentional oversight. So I mean, you guys did a lot of preparation and everything is so professional and so much work seems to have been done. So look at our regulations, I think, but yet there's this shocking to me oversight of there's a residential neighborhood with children who ride their bikes and it's a really, I mean, the street directly across the street is one of the most vibrant residential streets in town. And yet there's like completely a non acknowledgement of that. So I would like you guys at some point to address that. And I do think, you know, as to follow up on my, you know, question, the ARB statement to you guys or, you know, you know, whatever it was, because I wasn't there and we don't have their letter, that it's the gateway to the town. I think that's an important one because I see in your materials like urban, it's an urban area and this is a, you know, state road. We're a small town. And yes, we're near a highway and where it is a state road, but it's a one, you know, one lane on either side at your locate, at your proposed location. So I, I, I find those oversights kind of surprising.
So if I could, if I could ask for clarification, what is, what's the concern about the adjacent residential neighborhood on the other? So it's behind.
Find the, whether it was intentional or just an oversight, non mention of it, surprising.
But it's, I, I guess from a.
You know, it's a residential.
Zoning perspective.
Do you realize it's a residential?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Birch Road, the intersection of your site is a residential neighborhood. Do you know that?
Yes.
And you haven't mentioned it nor has your other, you know, anyone on your team so far. And I haven't seen it really in your material. So I find that surprising.
And, and I guess I would say from the perspective of, you know, what the zoning requirements are in a service business zone, it, there's, there's been a decision made by the Planning and Zoning Commission to designate this part of the Post Road for these types of uses. And there's a recognition of the fact that some of those areas are directly adjacent to residential zones. So I guess from my perspective, the reason it was not addressed in the materials is that we are not asking for a zone change, in which case I think proximity to the residential use would be highly relevant, but we're, we're looking at something that's a use that's allowed by special permit in this particular zone. And it's a zone that is designed for this type of use. As Jeremy noted, it's, it's the one zone in Darien that does allow for a gas station. And so I guess it's the nature of the application that is the reason there was no proactive discussion about that neighborhood because it's already a developed site. It's already used commercially. The zoning allows for a commercial use and we're not asking for a zone change.
You're asking for a lot of changes though. And I think to not acknowledge the, that you're at an intersection with a very vibrant residential neighborhood is, is surprising to me. And granted, you may have thought it wasn't relevant. I think those neighbors will think it's relevant. And I think as a commissioner, I have to consider it, even though you're not asking for a zoning change.
Right. And, and I think that's, that's the differentiation is that.
densely wooded area to the north.
To the, to the north, which is I-95. So the north on this, if you look at the existing site, north is heavily wooded. I can go back to the the aerial. So on our.
Yeah.
All right, right here. So this.
There are the houses.
This here is the north side of our site. And so this area is in fact heavily wooded because it's, it's the state right of way. The residential that's here on Birch Road is to the east and there's still the, the SB zone fronts along the Post Road. So we could, the fact, you know, again, this goes back to just an issue as to what the nature of what we're asking for. If we were asking to change the zoning of this particular piece of property, I absolutely don't disagree with you that the proximity to the residential use would be highly relevant. But there's already been a legislative decision made by predecessor members of this commission that this particular area of the Post Road is service business. And by making that determination, that decision about proximity to a residential zone and the nature of the commercial uses that could be proximate to a residential zone are inherent in that zoning decision. So I, I think it's relevant. I think it's, but it's, but it was a decision made by your, you know, a prior commission with respect to the nature of the, of the uses allowed here.
Okay, that's your response. Thanks.
Were there any other questions for, on the architecture before I turn it over to our engineer?
Hey Amy, this is James from HPA. If I could just add, I, I was wrapped up on, on the architecture and, and maybe because our presentation was a little out of sequence, we talked about the zoning regs and then immediately jumped into the building and the architecture without kind of laying the groundwork for the site and the site analysis. But to respond to the point about the residential neighborhood, I, I will say from the very beginning, we've been very conscious about the, the site, site constraints, the, the surrounding residential neighborhood. We, we took the approach very early on that we wanted the building to be designed in a more, like I said, New England residential character. And, and again, that was, was helped inform some of the massing, you know, in, in the scale of the building and, and obviously trying to, trying to be more in character with the abutting residential property. So from a building design standpoint, that is something that we've been conscious of. Our client's been very, you know, much advocating for that, that we want to fit in. And so we're going to continue to address the ARB's design comments to do that. I think that was kind of the, the last point on the building anyway, that I wanted to point out.
Thank you.
Relative to design comments and, and, you know, colors and color palettes and whatnot, we typically leave that up to the ARB to go at first and we'll see it after. So I'm not too worried about that. But relative to siding, that's our job as the planning zone of commission. So that's what we're most concerned with. And, and I, I am very anxious to hear from Bowler Engineering and how that's going to work out. Because there's a bunch of trees that are on the, you know, southeast side of the property that is probably going to come out. That gives it more visibility. But before I move on, does anybody, any commissioner have any questions relative to the architecture of the building or the layout of the building? We want to leave it up to those guys to come back. I don't see anybody jumping around. Okay. Next, next, who's up baby? Bowler Engineering?
Yep, Jim.
And Amy, I'm just, again, James from HPA, I'm just going to drop my camera off so that we don't get inundated with the amount of video, but I will be on answer any questions regarding the building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, James. For the record, Jim Bernardino with Bowler Engineering on Civil Site Engineers on Massachusetts. Amy's going over quite a bit. I think everybody's familiar with the existing facility. I'll just touch base on a couple of key components before we roll into the site plan. Obviously we have the Duchess Restaurant, which has a footprint of just over 3,000 square feet. Obviously it's a two story building. So the gross floor area is, you know, obviously larger than that 3,000 square feet. There's about 58 parking spots on site between the, between the parking in the building, the pervious on the site is approximately 80%. When you see the site plan, you'll notice that taking a great effort to greatly reduce the pervious on the site. So that will greatly enhance the landscaping. We'll get some bad feedback. I'm not sure.
It's my fault, sorry.
Oh, okay. Thank you. As I was saying, the landscaping will afford itself great opportunities with the more green space that's on the site. A couple of key components that are on the existing conditions plan is the existing driveway that's currently being utilized. Right now it's slightly over 36 feet in width, but it is a full movement access onto onto the main thoroughfare, onto Boston Post Road. Right now there's only a single exit lane leaving the site with a single entrance lane and it's divided by a very narrow painted island. So obviously the proposal is to do a complete raise and rebuild of the site. However, we're going to maintain a key component, which is the site access driveway, which we could roll to the next slide, Amy. We're going to maintain the existing location of the proposed driveway. However, we're going to enhance the, enhance the configuration of the turning lanes associated with it. We're going to add a dedicated right turn lane out and dedicated left turn lane out just to help with the site queuing and site circulation on the site. We, we took the approach of laying out the development with, you know, site circulation for customers that are associated with this type of use, the convenience store, gas station use. We've also considered emergency vehicles coming in the site circulating as well as the, the larger fuel tanker trucks that will be there several times a week, unloading fuel for the facility. So with the configuration, we have the proposed driveway, which is aligned with an access aisle that would lead up to the front of the store, which will gate, allow the patrons to either, you know, park within 15 of the parking spaces that are directly adjacent to the proposed just over 4,000 square foot convenience store facility. Or will also allow them to safely turn into one of the 12 fueling positions, which is six, what we call MPDs, multi-product dispensers, premium, regular, unleaded, in the medium grade as well. The, we've also provided additional parking on the far north hand side of the site, which is an additional 10 parking spaces for a combined of 25 parking spaces on site. As was discussed earlier, we derive the parking calculations based upon the floor area of the proposed intended use of the building. So we have a gross floor area that was just slightly over 4,000 square feet, 4,050. We had a seating area associated with the restaurant quick service use. That is approximately 100 square feet, which is consistent with the text amendment that Amy presented previously. And associated with the preparation, the kitchen and the sales of the quick service restaurants, about 365 square feet. For an aggregate or a total area of about 465 square feet associated with the quick serve restaurant use. We applied the current regulation for restaurant within the Darien's zoning regulations for, as they're applied to this, which is one per 150 square feet. That resulted in four parking spaces required for the quick service restaurant use. We subtracted out that 465 square feet associated with a quick service restaurant from the 4,000 square feet of the, in which gives us a balance of almost 3,600 square feet of retail space. We then applied the one per 200 or the five for 1,000 that resulted in 18 parking spaces. So combination of the two uses resulted in 22 required parking spaces and we're proposing 25 on the site. And as we did mention before, there was a question brought up about is this parking count consistent with what we see in addition standards? The answer to that is yes. You're generally in the 25 to 30 parking spot range for a building of this size with these MPDs, this number of fueling position. When you look at larger buildings upwards of 5,000 to 6,000 in additional positions above the six that are shown, then generally we, we look at a potentially larger demand that would be needed. But with the, with the neighborhood and the area that we currently in, we feel the 25 is appropriate for the, the intensity of the program that we're proposing. Just to run through the site plan a little bit more, we do on the east side of the building, which is along the I-95 corridor. East side, we have a dedicated loading zone and a traction closure, which will obviously be a private pickup. Associated with that under the responsibility of the applicant. As I mentioned previously, we will have six multi-product dispensers that will be housed under a canopy. The canopy is going to be approximately 38 feet by 88 feet long. And obviously what's supplying these product dispensers are going to be two underground storage tanks, both with a 20,000 gallon capacities or a total of 40,000 gallons of underground storage. One tank will be 20,000 gallons of regular gas. The other tank would be actually a split compartment with an 8,000 gallon premium and a 12,000 gallon diesel associated with that. We worked out, as I mentioned previously, the site access to allow for delivery vehicles and circulation in and around the site without conflict of any parking stalls with site circulation in mind. One of the comments that we have received thus far and have addressed accordingly was from the fire marshal, which asked us to confirm the fire apparatus can actually gain access and circulate through the site. We have done that and by all means, fire apparatus can come in and circulate the site as well as a larger semi tractor trailer truck for the tanker truck for the fuel delivery. We are not proposing to service tanker trucks for diesel. Diesel are going to be more of the landscaper, construction dump trucks, more aspects that can come into the site, more of a passenger sized vehicle rather than a tractor trailer. As I mentioned previously, we've developed an updated plan that reduces the overall impervious on the site by 15%. That's upwards of over 6,500 square feet of new grassed area. So we did develop a comprehensive landscape plan that along the eastern boundary line of the neighbor, we're providing a row of evergreen shrubs to enhance the existing buffer that's already there. So that'll be a combination of some marver vitias and junipers, evergreen shrubbery. One other question that was brought up or at least a comment was on the southbound approach on Boston, Boston Post Road heading towards the site. We are providing to, proposing to provide a a new landscaping screen buffer along that frontage with a number of shade trees across the front, which we received some preliminary comments from the ARB, which we will address regarding the species. So we're going to change the species up to be. uh address regarding the species. So we're going to change the species up to be in line with uh some of the A R B components. Um in addition to the shade tree, we've incorporated some landscape beds that have a combination of deciduous those evergreen shrub uh as well as some annual planting across that area. Um likewise, um we've also developed a lighting plan that has um considered the we have a lighting plan that's actually considered um the overspill of lighting onto the adjacent properties. So we're trying, we have minimized li- light over um light spill onto the adjacent property roadways while maintaining illumination on the state to um provide safe pedestrian and customer access throughout the site. Um one other uh topic I want to touch base on real quickly as well is uh stormwater. Obviously, in addition to adding in a grassed and landscape area in its in and itself results in a decrease in peak rate of flow. Um that area does have uh regulations that require us to look at a condition that is uh what they call the meadow approach. Let's not consider it being a large parking up paved area. Let's consider the existing conditions as a meadow grassed area. Uh we did such in our evaluations uh and subsequently, we have uh and are providing an underground um detention system. So the the proposal does incorporate a comprehensive uh collection, uh treatment and detention um components of a drainage system, and then ultimately discharges to the north uh via an existing culvert into the wetland drainage system that uh Amy mentioned previously, in which we have uh presented, discussed with the E P C, and ultimately have uh received approval from. Um that uh that system is also uh under the jurisdiction of the D O T, uh which obviously we have made some initial um contact with and have begun our discussions with uh them uh regarding various com- um components of the site, one which is the drainage as well. Uh we've received a a very short memo regarding some comments that they had uh regarding the configuration. Nothing that I see is going to uh dramatically affect the overall um layout and designs of the system, uh more clarifications and um enhancements that are being recommended by the D O T. Uh Amy also mentioned previously that uh we do have a handful of comments from the various uh staff and peer review. Um as we mentioned, we have previously responded to the fire department and the D P W's uh comments. Uh we we found it to those in writing. Uh none of those comments uh required any plan changes at the time, so we thought it was appropriate to at least respond to those as soon as we possibly could. Uh we've also received um the pair uh review from Ty and Bond. Um they did have a comprehensive uh list of comments. Um I have gone through those comments. Uh many of them are clarifications. Um maybe just uh some enhancements and recommendations. Um we're we're definitely going to be working with them to address all those issues. Uh I do not foresee any substantial site plan change requirements uh that would actually be noticeable by anybody uh with non-technical means. Uh I think they're going to be more of technical calculations and maybe minor underground detention modifications that you would physically would not see any alteration in operation of the overall site. Um you know, with that, uh I I think that's kind of a real broad stroke that we have uh on the overall site plans. Um I would turn it over to Amy if she has anything else to add. If not, um over to anybody on the admission that um has any questions.
I think just commission questions.
Okay, um I want to go first and some the chairman. With regards to the landscaping plan and and off-site stuff, um that which is up on the screen, if you look to the left um on the aerial photo, if you also look in your presentation at the very beginning, there's a big um buffer area with trees. I I take it that's off-site and on um state-owned land?
Yes, you you are correct in that statement. So basically, what's a good um toggle between the two uh Amy is if you go back to the site plan versus the existing condition plan, start off with the site plan. So as you see, the property line in the far left is actually paved right up to the edge of the property. So that obviously has no tree. Um and what we're doing is actually pulling our pavement away from that area a little bit, adding some grass and landscaping. Slope. However, that significant standard trees that you're referring to in the area are to be remained. There's no proposal to remove any of that.
Okay, so Amy, if you could go back to the very, very first slide in your presentation, next to the cover page?
Yeah, I know exactly which one. Trees.
Exactly. That set of trees is on state-owned land.
That's correct.
So you're not touching that?
We're not touching them.
So if I'm driving down Interstate ninety-five or the post road, the visual I'm still going to see is that forest of trees.
That's correct. Basically, the Duchess property is virtually built almost up to their property lines right now. So any of those substantial trees that you're seeing um are within the D O T right away.
Okay, so now, if you go back to the Boulder Engineering landscaping plan. Right in the front, you have three big trees that are to the left of the entrance island?
Yes.
And then one big tree to the right of the entrance island?
Oh, that's correct.
And those trees are going to be, what kind again? Are they this?
Currently, we have them shown as Bradbury Gallery pear trees, being two and a half uh to three inches in caliber at planting. Uh that has been mentioned to us by the architectural review board that we need to mix that up a little bit. We can't have four consistent trees across the front, which which we acknowledge. So we're going to work with the A R B. Take a look at the list, uh you approved, the recommended planting and incorporate those um into our landscape. Same number of locations. We might just change the species of one or two of those trees.
And the caliber of the trunk of those trees, you said, at three inches?
Two and a half to three inches at putting things.
Okay, have you considered making those bigger?
Um a- a- at this moment, we have not. Generally, the the supply um of those is not readily available when you look at a three to four inch caliber or greater. These will be done, we consider something that is uh native and readily available uh in the general area.
Great. I I would I would encourage you to see if you can make those trees bigger. Because when they, when the canopy is higher, you're going to block the lights that's going to be on the bottom side of the canopy of the canopy. The canopy of the tree tree is higher, and it's the summer, you're going to block the lights, uh the fluorescent lights or L E D lights that are underneath the canopy.
Yeah, we we we'll take that and we will um take that into consideration.
Okay.
The the other thing I would just note is that the A R B is also working on an updated species list, so they wanted us to see their updated list as well. So I think the combination of those things um we can look at.
Personally, I'm not worried about the species. I just don't want little two-inch caliper trees. Three of them parked, and we're going to wait twenty years for those trees to get big and block the canopy. Because you remember, it we, it it is the gateway into Darien. So if I'm driving down I ninety-five or the post road, I'd rather see a forest versus lights underneath the canopy. And as it as a perfect example, I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, maybe you are, and you're familiar. The at nine at nine seventy-five Kings Highway East in Fairfield, Connecticut, is a Cumberland Farms that's at the bottom of an exit ramp. You can see that for for two miles north of I ninety-five.
I know which one you're talking about.
Right, I'm trying to.
Literally, as you're on the highway, the ramp is directly in front of you, and you're looking basically into the window of the Cumberland Farms from ninety-five.
Right, this this same exact layer. I'm trying to, I'm trying not have that happen in our town.
Understand.
Hey, so you have a you have a row of bush, a row of existing forest, I'm going to call it, that's on state-owned land that you're not going to wipe out, and you're putting in some buffer in there, but not much, but the buffers on the post roadside. Okay, um that's the 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 where the trees are in the siding. All that that comes into our purview. The the A R B, those guys are tougher than we are, but um I listen to them too. Um so any questions from commissioners? Uh Larry Warble, you light is on.
Um yeah, are 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 we gonna, are are you going to walk through at any point the type of lighting that's going to be on the site and the light spillage, because there is a residential neighborhood just on the other side of the post road?
Yes, um if you like, I I can um. Well, we'll start off with 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 some building lighting. Now, around the perimeter of the building, our current lighting plan actually should be wall-offed with lights. Um I won't go into the detail of that. We're working with um our architecture team uh for some enhancements on that from a visual as well as a less impact um for the light's intensity. So uh during the architect presentation, they showed a a board of some of the materials and fixtures that are being presented. So we're going to incorporate uh some gooseneck lightings along the uh building facade to illuminate uh the walkways and the like. Those would be um at approximately eleven feet high, just to provide uh illumination for um pedestrian access to and from the building. It's a minor parking lot enhancements as well. So that will have very minor um impacts and illumination-wise. Um the, under the canopy lights, you know what, I may even is there an opportunity for me to uh share the screen?
I say, Jim, I have a clearer copy of this, but if you want to share that.
Uh I have a couple of snippets of what the actual lights look like, and I think I want to do that.
Yep, so I just canceled mine, so you should be able to um.
Okay, um maybe administrator can allow me access to share?
One moment.
No, no problem. Thank you. And I wonder which screen you got? You got a pretty blue ocean? Let me just move my thing to my other screen. Bear with me. All right, so here is the site lightings, which are going to be proposed to be mounted at twenty feet height. So we got a modern sleek um look L E D uh light. Uh obviously, we on the plans, they are uh proposed to be a a bronze color, not necessarily a uh silver color. Um so with that, um that's the uh appearance and the overall that are uh associated with uh light lighting. Uh as far as the canopy lighting goes, um we're looking at a flush-mounted flat lens up in the canopy, um direct downlight. Um that's not necessarily a hundred percent recess. We're going to work with A R B with their comments on that. Um we just received some written comments from the A R B. Uh I believe it was today, Amy, that uh asked for it to make sure we confirm that to be recessed. So we're going to be looking at that type of fixture that's going to be recessed um or a flat-mounted fixture such as being proposed here. I'll go into the lighting plan. Wait with me one moment. So apologize for the colors, but our our vendor um gives a little bit of color. So as we walk around the property, we we have zero foot candles a- at the property lines along the eastern property line of our butter, we have zero point one zero foot candles. But I also like to remind or point out to um uh the commission that along this property line here is also a fence that's existing to remain that also provides shield, which has not been modeled uh within the lighting fixture. So basically, the light spillage that's calculated here does not account for any landscape blockage or fence being blocked as well. Uh likewise, along the perimeter here at the site, this is not the um on the uh on ramp to I ninety-five, we are at the point two, point four range, just right at the edge of the property line. Uh in all intensive purposes, that zero, we do have a large, you know, large standard trees here that do block the spillage. Um so we don't believe that's going to be uh any negative impact uh associated with uh the lights. Uh likewise, down along the property lines down through here, we're in the um, you know, zero point one range at the properties uh right at the entrance. We're generally, you see a little bit more at the entrance for spillage, point three, point one. But obviously, that's definitely a safety issue that we want to maintain as much um illumination in that area as possible for um, you know, any type of vehi- vehicle or pedestrian conflict. Um and then obviously, it tapers off down as you go through, back to a point of origin that we started to speak of previously. So that in a nutshell is some of the intensities of uh the lights, what we're looking to do. Um we didn't get into great detail with the um uh A R B regarding this. Um so obviously, I think they're going to look at it in uh more detail as uh we get to them again.
And again, air, this lighting and fixtures and whatnot lands are being the purview of the planning zoning commission.
Correct, yes.
The only the only I would say is that you mentioned that the the building's going to be kind of sort of New England architecture, and then your lights are going to be sleek, modern design. That to me just sounds conflicting.
Um we we can take a look at that to see, you know, have a similar uh light intensity and try to uh mimic uh in cohesive with what those um gooseneck lights are going to be. I'm trying to stop sharing that screen, but I can't.
Do the gooseneck lights have any kind of a shielding to them that even though there's no light spillage, but even someone you know, from a resident living in the neighborhood, which is north of that site? They're just looking at it. Are they going to be able to, do they, can they see the bulb, the lights themselves? Or is there going to be any kind of a shielding that just can direct the light down and minimize what they're looking at? Because I I just didn't hear, I I I prefaced my question with, there's a residential neighborhood to the, you know, across the street, and and I just didn't hear you address anything about that.
Um yes, we'll take a look as I mentioned. We'll be working with the light vendor, and we could, we will take a look at um the various types of goosenecks that are consistent with the architectural element, you know, appearance-wise that they're looking, but we also will take a look at um how they actually operate in our download. Generally, the 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 gooseneck lights are uh less intense. They're more for um spot illumination of bike walks and walkways. Um they're not mounted as high as um the pole mounted, they're down building approximately ten to eleven feet. So um we'll definitely take a look and be able to present that element the next time we talk um with the commission uh and will, you know, specifically address those comments about the light spill impacts to the neighbors, neighboring uh residential neighborhoods as well.
Thank you.
I'm going to go back with one more question, and I might be stealing, uh, Michael Galante's thunder. But can you back to your site plan for a second, site plan number 301, if possible? Or at any site plan that you have. There's two parking spaces that are right at Jason, Jason to the entrance. I am, I'm going to stink it suspicion that those are not good.
Well, um, Amy, could you put that up? I apologize, it's. My screen sharing is not working very well. Um, because Amy puts it up.
Because I have to.
Again.
If I drive my Suburban. Yeah, into the, into the site. And I park in those two spaces right at the entrance. And then when I back out to get my Suburban out of those two spaces. I'm pretty much blocking the entire driveway entrance. Yeah, I, I think I might be stealing Michael Galante's.
Go right ahead.
I'm just, I know you pretty well, Michael. So you might have 25 spaces. But I'd take a suspicion that those two are, are not good, and you're the engineer, so you can.
I, I, I do understand the concern, um, I don't want to say this is a common fact, it's not, um, we have developed as much. Uh, I do see the first one potentially being a concern, um, with that movement with, um, however, with the second one, I, I don't see that, I mean, much of a concern, you're actually going to be, uh, in a, you know, second one, you're, you're over 30 feet off of the flopping line. Um, upwards of almost 40 feet from the traveled way as cars approach in. So, uh, I think that gap, you know, that 35 to 40 foot gap from the entrance approaching coming in, um, has, you know, will give you a slight line and accessibility. So we could take a look at, um, potentially making an operation to, uh, address that entrance concern. Uh, but I, I, I think one may be a reasonable two, I don't see any issues, you know, slight layout, maneuvering.
That's right, you can, you can, um, discuss that with Michael Galante, but, you know, to me, and then one of the commissioners has a nice big Suburban and a lot of. And, and she would back out of that spot. Um, so we can move on, but I, I want to get to the other commissioners relative to this consultant. We heard from Larry, um, we have from, um, George, Rick, George, Riley, your mic is on.
Yeah, a couple of things if I can, uh, first probably a very simple one, but what is that cross hatch rectangle that is, uh, on the top of the, uh, uh, existing site plan near the dumpsters, is that simply no parking?
Um, and the existing site plan?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I believe that was dedicated.
No, I'm sorry, it's a site layer, I'm, I'm sorry, it's the site layout.
Site layout plan just on the north side, yeah, it, it was dedicated, uh, just to show that it is a dedicated loading area.
Loading area, okay.
Yeah. There is dedicated, and just to do a preemptive strike with another comment that may come out. Do you see head in here, um, that is straight in front of that loading zone? Obviously, um, this is, uh, you know, I've done a lot of convenience stores and gas stations in the last couple of years. This is becoming a, a, a common occurrence, obviously, this is a, you know, use of convenience. So parking in these spots are generally no more than three to five minutes maximum. So obviously, if there's any type of loading, um, vehicles that do come into play, they'll be able to have free, clear access. Uh, most often anytime, but at worst case, they're really waiting two or three minutes before they're fully in access the dedicated area.
Okay, okay. Um, well, let me ask you about the ADA compliant parking space. There, there seems to be only one, I don't honestly know the rules, uh, but one seems few.
Um, minimum requirements are one space, uh, up, up to including 25 parking spaces. Once you get 26 parking spaces in a boat, two spaces are required. Um, so we're proposing the one space, however, it is.
Okay, got it, all right. Uh, what else did I have? Uh, the, um, it looks like you're proposing a, uh, a crosswalk of some sort, you're gonna do some painting on the post road or what have you for the, a crosswalk there?
Uh, no, that's not a crosswalk, um, what, what we've done is we established a limited work line on our plan. Uh, that is actually a, a utility line that's, uh, extending out into the street. Um, to connect into, it may be a new gas line or a new sewer line. Um, we do have all public utilities out there, gas, water, electric, um, sewer as well. Um, so that dash line is not a proposed crosswalk, it's just a, a limit of work and an area of pavement repair that will be needed.
Okay, you see, I'm learning, learning slowly. Um, so the, um, egress, the, the current, uh, existing conditions, I would have sworn it is a right turn only out of that property.
No, no, it's not restricted.
No, there was signage, I would have sworn that said exit pointing to the right. I guess others have checked that out, whatever, turning left was inappropriate.
Yeah, we do have Jason Adams available, he's from McMahon Associates, uh, he's our traffic consultant, uh, he's teed up to be next. Um, but I think you confirm that, uh, there's no signage and that is a full movement, uh, egress coming out from that current single lane, um, from the site.
Okay, all right, fair enough, thanks.
Jim, um, Jennifer Leahy, any questions? Are you still there, or? Uh, Jim Rand, you light us on?
Yeah, um, if I'm asking, if I'm repeating the question about the lighting, I apologize. Um, we've gone through this a couple of times with, uh, with, um, oh, I can't remember, with H L Chevrolet and the high school and what have you. The, I, my question applies both to the lights in general and specifically to the ones around the building. Are they going to be, um, the hell do you call them, these unidirectional?
Shielded?
Uh, no, um. What the hell? I know, I forgot what the terminology is, Steve, help me out here, um, the lights that only shine in one direction.
Yeah, downward. So, yeah.
So they're not going to splash, and they're not, I'm specifically interested in the ones in the facade of the building. That they won't splash on the side of the building, so that even though there's no lumens or whatever you want to call it across the street, the building itself is lit up. Am I explaining myself well?
Um, you, you're looking to avoid the illumination on the building, you're looking for more of a sidewalk.
Yeah, I, I, I. I prefer that it be focused on the sidewalk and not splash on the building, so that you can see the building from the residential area.
Understood, yep, we'll, we'll, we'll take that into consideration when we, um, look at an updated plan to incorporate the, uh, the, this new fixtures that we discussed.
Okay, and I have just one quick question, Jeremy, what are the, what, what are the setback rules for, for this zone? I mean, if I look at the, almost any of the, of the site plans or the utility plan or anything, the, the corner, this, let's call it the northwest corner of the building is right at the property line.
Right, in this zone, the zoning chart is shown on sheet C-301. And in this zone, uh, there is no side yard setback, so, uh, we can, we can talk to them about making sure that that, you could, there was a little room on that side, uh, even though there's no requirement for a setback. Uh, we thought it might be helpful for people to be able to get around the building, people maintaining the building. But, uh, the zoning chart is clear, and I'll, I'll take another look at the zoning chart to make sure everything checks out, but I, uh, and that everything's correct.
Right, and the, the, for comparison, the, um, area and bulk requirements are on page, uh, Roman seven dash 20. And, and Jeremy's correct that the, there is no side yard requirement, uh, front yard is 30 feet and rear yard is, uh, 20 feet. And then we also have the, um, because we're east of Birch Road, um, what you see on the site plan, um, where we have parking on, there's a parking on the existing site, um, when you go to the, uh, rendering, we now, that parking is eliminated in order for us to comply with that, um, 18 foot, uh, minimum landscaped area. So that's where that disappears, so, you know, what's, what's currently there, um, and, you know, addressing this issue of, of lighting from, you know, the existing or toward the existing neighborhood. Um, you know, our property line is here, this is still state right of way, so we eliminate all of this parking and turn that into, into landscaping with those trees, so, um, I think with that screening, you'll see an improvement over, um, you know, what, what's currently, um, you know, what, what you're envisioning with respect to, uh, the canopy, because we are taking away that parking, which obviously takes away lights or anything like that shining from the property, you know, somebody pulls into one of those spaces, um, their lights would, would shine out sort of towards the diner. Um, and by eliminating those, we, that's another way in which we, we minimize any impact onto those, um, properties on the other side of the bus, bus and post road and, and beyond.
I'm on, sorry, I, I couldn't turn my thing on, my wifi's great, that's not good. Um, so I won't repeat anything, uh, that is said about lighting, and this is not something necessarily that we, um, it's under our purview, but just to, you know, I don't know when this fits in, well, I guess when we talk about traffic, but just for safety purposes, you know, because we're so close to 95, and obviously there's additional screening, but on the flip side of screening, um, when something's used at hours where, you know, things, maybe not the best things happening, for any of us who have lived in areas of Darien where, um, you know, burglaries happen, right, like car thefts, et cetera. Um, is there, you know, just to be mindful, this is not for me, but what kind of video cameras and surveillance are in there? Because although screening is great for lighting and protecting, you know, residents from having lights shine on them or whatever, Darien diner, et cetera. Um, just for, I don't know, I, it's a, it's a, it's going to be a spot, I'm assuming you guys are going to be, or 7-Eleven will be doing, um, promoting on 95?
We are not allowed any signage on the 95 frontage.
No, 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 that's something, sorry, I wasn't clear, so on 95, you know, I could say like, oh, go to 7-Eleven, it's off of exit 13.
Um, I don't know where the plan is quite yet, um, I think we're hoping to get through the approval process first. Um, but obviously, I think the, um, you know, it, it's, it's a, it's a prime location, and certainly, there's no question that people will be coming off 95. We also do expect, um, a fair number of, you know, Darien residents who might be getting on the highway or, um, traveling by, uh, because of that location. Um, but we can, I can check about what our, um, security is, I mean, for, just from the perspective of, um, just being a gasoline station, um, there is, you know, the attendants have, um, in, in part of the layout, uh, attendants need to be able to see the pumps from inside the station, so there is that visibility, um, out from the store. So I think that, you know, knowing that there is, um, you know, a, a visual, um, opportunity from inside the store out to the pumps does provide sort of yet another, um, layer, but we can, we can talk about, um, I, I'll check with the client as to, you know, any kind of other security measures that are in place.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good, because also the other thing that happened, I think it was in Darien as well, but I know it's in, uh, Fairfield County, kind of the stations nearby highways is, um, you know, you're pumping your own gas and you leave the car open, and someone comes to try to, you know, either steal from your car, or it's not like a holdup, it's like they actually steal while your car's open and you're pumping gas. So there's just a lot of safety concerns, because I think if there's promotion of this off the highway, it's a, it's an easy place to bring in, um, some, you know, crime that we, we may or may not have had before, I, I know it happened to me actually, it, well, almost happened to me in, um, um, when I was pumping gas, but it was, it was in Westchester on the way into the city, but where someone literally tried to open up the other side of my car. So anyway, those are my concerns.
I see another hand.
Thank you, um, Karen, um, following on Jen's concerns about safety, and I appreciate that there will be video cameras for the attendant to be able to see if, you know, there's theft at the pumps. But similarly, really, like Jen, I'm also from the New York area, um, and 7-Elevens, in my experience, there's instances of that, and so will there be video cameras inside the facility? As well, not just outside watching the pumps, but will there be security? And what kind of attendance will be there, I mean, you're proposing 24 hours a day to be open, correct?
Correct.
I mean, Jeremy, do we have any facilities or any commercial businesses open 24 hours a day currently?
Yes, I don't recall exactly which ones, but there are a few in town that are open 24 hours, I can check on which ones they are.
24 hours a day open to this?
Open for what?
Dunkin' Donuts is normally open 24 hours a day.
I'm sorry.
They said Dunkin' Donuts is 24 hours a day, except for the COVID.
Oh, by a train station.
No, no, in town.
Train station, but I'll check on which.
Uh, yeah, so I mean, I think that's an issue, um, and will they be proposing selling alcohol beverages at the convenience store?
You are not allowed to do that in Connecticut as a gas station.
I can't hear you.
You're not allowed to do that in Connecticut as a gas station.
No beer.
Right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't know that the woman.
I lost all sound, is it just me?
I'll text you.
Yes.
I can't hear anybody.
That, that happened to somebody else on the call, that they lost the sound.
I apologize, I can't hear anybody right now, so I, I appreciate everyone speaking, um, but again, all I was saying was my concerns was like Jen's on safety and security. And on, you know, the precedent in town for 24 hours, but unfortunately, I couldn't hear anybody's responses, something happened with the audio, uh, because on my side or someone else's, but I apologize for that.
Okay. We did Larry Warble, we did, George, we ask you any question, Chad?
What order on this one? Yeah, I'm done, I'm done.
We got Jim, or I think we got everybody. Before we move on after, um, the site plan to the next guy, which is the traffic guy, I try to ask Michael Galante, do you have any comments at this point, or you want to wait and hold your thunder till after the traffic consultant?
I would love to hold my thunder. No, okay, Mike Clancy, I'll see and hand over, it would be appropriate for the applicant's traffic consultant to make a presentation. It may include some responses to our comments from our most recent letter, and then I would follow that either tonight or another night.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so Amy, I think we're done with the, um, Bola Engineering Consultant Presentation piece. So if you want to move on to your next professional.
Sure, so that's, uh, Jason Adams, who is our traffic engineer. Sure. So that's Jason Adams, who is our traffic engineer. And I'm just gonna show you that, go back to that slide. With that, Jason.
Thanks, Amy. Good evening, I'm Jason Adams with McMahon Associates. We completed a traffic impact study to review the potential impacts of the project. The, if you feel like, I'll just go through a little bit of the methodology of the study. Hit on a couple of points around access and safety. And then speak a bit to the peer review comments. Happy to answer any questions afterwards. So our study focused on the project site driveway.
You know, I don't mean, I'm just, I just think it'd be fair to you if I let you know a couple of my thoughts before you start, because it just might be for you to incorporate them. I'm going to be very interested to know the impact on, you know, specifically Birch Road. People coming onto Route One from Birch, Birch Road, trying to make a left turn, crossing traffic, because right now the volume of traffic there is brutal for anyone making that left turn. And I think it's fair to know, to understand how many, you know, how much traffic is going to be coming in and out, especially if it's going to be different kind of traffic that's there now. Trucks fueling, you're selling diesel, things of that nature that, that could, might, you know, significantly add to the volume on the road. So I just, rather than let you do everything and then ask the question, I thought I might want to just let you know about that upfront.
And in that same vein, upfront, because obviously we all read this, but maybe I totally missed it. But if there is signage on 95 that says six miles ahead, go to 7-Eleven, what is the impact on traffic? And what is the increase of traffic on a site that previously didn't have something like this? If we have an example that can be used, I'm most interested in that and what Larry asked.
Great, yep, thanks. Good, good to know. And I'll try to work that into, to the information I give and if there's more specific questions afterwards, I'm happy to answer those as well. So our study focused on the, the project site driveway and the intersections of Boston Post Road and I-95 on and off ramp. So Birch Road being located south of the site and not in between the site and the highway was not a specific focus of the study. I will say that we, we do expect that most of the traffic coming to and from the site would be between the highway and the site. So the, the project impact on Birch Road would not be all that much greater than understanding that there are difficulties making left turns of that roadway today. We wouldn't expect the, the vehicles traveling to and from the project site would, would really have an appreciable impact on the Birch Road movements themselves. Would take place in advance of Birch Road. Our study being, we're, we're in the COVID pandemic. We weren't able to collect what we would normally do in terms of traffic data as, as volumes today are not considered to be normal. So what we did was use traffic volume data that was available through the Connecticut Department of Transportation for studies that they have recently completed. And we developed our existing and future data using confirmed traffic growth rates and trip generation data that's available from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Based on the analysis that we conducted, we worked with the project team to provide the two exiting lanes that Bowler and Amy have discussed earlier tonight from the site. As you're aware, the, the vehicles exiting the site today are able to take the left and right turns from a single lane. So our proposed design would provide additional capacity and reduce vehicle delay and queuing. Ultimately, if our project is approved, we would then need to apply for an encroachment permit from the Connecticut Department of Transportation. So we have shared the site plan and the traffic study with Connecticut DOT as part of a pre-submission. We have, as, as Jim from Bowler spoke to, received some comments on the site. And in those comments, we didn't, we did not receive any pushback on the proposed driveway configuration. So assuming that we can get through the local approvals, we will need to get a state approval. And, and the state will be certainly taking a look at the access point that's going to be a key issue. But to date, we have not received any pushback against our proposed configuration, which we've been discussing tonight. As part of the, the study, we did, we did review available crash data from the Connecticut Crash Data Repository. And looking over the most recent three years of available data, which is 2017 to 2019, there were only three crashes reported at the site driveway. So that, that results in a very low crash rate of zero point, or .09 crashes per million entering vehicles. It indicates essentially that there's no existing safety deficiency at the site driveway. We also completed a review of the available site distance, making sure that we, we have appropriate visibility for vehicles turning in and out of the site. And the project site benefits from available site distances that exceed the recommended site distances given the vehicle speeds on Boston Post Road. So both those indicate that the, the site today as proposed is designed in an appropriate way to allow for safe and efficient movements.
Can I interrupt one second?
Sure.
I just want to give you two bits of information. The office building complex, which is, I think the address is 350, 330, Boston Post Road, right next to you, to the south. The last three years is basically 100% vacant. Okay. And then this, that's past that, going further south, which is now has a Orange Theory in it.
And what else is in there now? A pasta vida, green field cleaners, used to be a sewing machine shop.
Yeah. That building was also, now I would say vacant, but basically vacant. It was a sewing machine guy and, you know, I, I know you can only take the crash data and the impact data that's available out there, but that's just two things for you to recognize. That office building complex now that's been renovated, I think it's like 80% occupied. And the other building that was a sewing machine is now Orange Theory. Orange Theory is just absolutely killing it.
So understood that the, the volumes may have, have grown or have increased since that data is available. But, but as you said, that, that is essentially what, what we can look at right now to understand if there are known safety deficiencies.
Right. Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, quite all right. So the traffic study has been peer reviewed and I know you have your, your reviewer here to speak to those. We've received the comments. The review does ask for clarification on some of our methodology and approach to the study. But overall, we feel that the comments can be adequately addressed. And we'll, we will work to put together a response to the comments. We have additional information to provide relative to trip generation, the, the project site trips. And there were some, some questions about the analysis, that some of the analysis that we provided. Overall, we don't expect those will change the conclusions of the study. But we certainly will work with your peer reviewer to make sure that, that everything is, is understood and presented in an acceptable manner.
Okay. Are you good for now?
I am, yes. I'm happy to answer any questions.
The only, the only thing I would ask you, I'm looking at figures and I'm going to let Michael Galante speak, cause this is his, this is Billy Wick. But relative to, in your report, figures two and three.
Yes.
Where you have your, your intersections, the, the one intersection that Commissioner Warble asked about with Birch Road. I would request that some of you could include that in the study. And just take a look at that intersection, because that's what Commissioner Warble was talking about.
Okay, right, noted.
And then that's it. And then, like to, to answer Jennifer Leggy's question, we haven't, recently we put, that we approved the Shake Shack in town. If you go up to, you know, exit 19, it says Shake Shack at exit 10. When you talk about chip generation, do you think about things like that?
So the, the trip generation is based on nationwide data. So that, so there are sites that are located directly off of highways such as this. There are other sites that are located further from highways. And it, and it blends the trip generating characteristics of all those sites to create what is considered to be a standard expectation of the number of vehicle trips. So, so the site doesn't specifically account for its proximity to 95. But it does, in the sense that all of the data is compiled from various sites across the country, in, include unexpected trip generating characteristics associated with the site.
Okay, that's fine. It is, as long as it's taken care of. I think we'd like to hear from Michael Galante first, and then I think we'll go back to the commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Michael Galante, Odyssey and Hanover. What I'd like to discuss, just a couple of things, what was not mentioned in any detail tonight in the traffic consultant's presentation, and I'm not criticizing, is that we're not, we haven't really talked about what the site is generating as far as traffic. They've gone through a very detailed process estimating traffic from new development, the convenience store, if you will, components within the store itself and the 12 pumps, which, which we agree with, it's fine. They provide a comparison to what the Duchess Restaurant likely was generating before the endemic hit. And you really couldn't count the driver and get a real number. And they've obtained the traffic estimates from the transportation engineers, which is the appropriate methodology. And we agree with that. One concern we have is that in their use of the size of Duchess Building, they've also accounted for the basement, which is preparation area or storage, I, I really, I'm not really sure. But it, it does have an impact on the net change in traffic between Duchess and a, and the proposed 7-Eleven facility. Just for numbers, their numbers for the moment is that this development in this comparison will add 143 trips to the morning peak hour along the site frontage in each of, each of the intersections and about 119 vehicle trips during the afternoon peak hour. I just want to give the, the commission an understanding of that this development will add traffic to the road system. It's been, it's been analyzed and they, they've drawn conclusions as far as levels of service, which weren't discussed. There are some delays out there today, or some of these delays increased a little bit. The interchange was really the focus of the analysis along with the site driveway. Birch was not included and it could be included in their response to the commission's concerns. So we just want them to address, and I'm sure they will, the comparison of the Duchess Restaurant would have generated and what the future 7-Eleven will generate. And look at the net change. And I think the net change numbers will go up a little bit when they do that. But I do say that they're conservative in their approach as far as the traffic to be generated by the 7-Eleven facility and how they broke it down. You typically don't see that and I appreciate what they, they've done some homework on that. Going into the analysis, we had some comments on the details of the capacity analysis, which that will, they'll address. And I'm not going to, going to go through to some of those details as traffic engineers, we understand those details. And it'll probably help them in their analysis as far as the impacts to the intersections, as far as how they analyze the intersection. And we're dealing with peak hour factors to be a little, little bit defined. And they were very conservative in that approach. So where they might be adding more traffic to the analysis, the analysis itself might be a little bit conservative. So in the end, the results may be very similar. So I just, I just point that out. Jumping to the site plan for a moment. Chairman, you mentioned the two parking spaces on the right coming in the driveway. I was a little bit nicer, I just said remove one space on the right side coming out. It is a very close intersection and concerned with a car coming in, turning right into the side driveway and hopefully not hitting a car more suburban backing out of that first base, it is slow. So I'd like to see at least the first base eliminated if they can, as a parking code, to relieve some of those concerns as far as safety coming in the driveway. And I think the state may have that concern as they get into some of the details. And I'll touch on my comment about the two-lane exit drive versus the one-lane exit road. And I speak from experience because I've had a similar situation in a different district of Condat DT, districts throughout the state of Connecticut. And while they didn't mention in their parent review from District 3 of New Haven, I've seen in the past where different offices within Condat have different opinions on the two-lane exit versus the one-lane exit. What they do ask for sometimes is in wide lane, it functions as two lanes, but it's not striped as a two-lane approach coming out of the road. And I just, I just wanted, wanted to give heads up on that, District 3 of New Haven may have that comment eventually. They provided a, a two analysis process in the report as well, so the conduct people have that information. The site goes to two-lane exit and the concern with the two-lane exit out of a stop sign controlled intersection, whether it's public or driveway, is if you have two cars coming out at the same time, one, that suburban that Chairman you drive, and someone in a sports car that they don't drive coming out, the sports car can't see through the suburban. And that's the concern of Condat and actually other states are doing the same thing, such as New York. And I'm sure other states, we, we work in New York and Connecticut and they're saying the same thing. There's a concern with, from a safety perspective, with two lanes of traffic coming out of a driveway that's stop sign controlled. So I just wanted to give a heads up on that. We'll reserve any more comments until the applicant provides responses to our comments. And then we'll go through and finalize, finalize our review and have maybe some other comments or a sign off.
Michael, do you think it's a fair request to focus on the Birch Road restriction too?
I misplotted it, but I think they should analyze the Birch Road approach to Boston Post Road. They can, you know, they can do counts there now and adjust them just the same as they adjusted the one-lane. And we can, you know, offer our assistance on the process with that. We're not in normal times as far as traffic, although traffic is increasing pretty quickly back on roads. But as we all know, you know, April, May, June were very different than it is today in, in September as far as volumes on I-95 in that corridor.
Great. Okay. Let's go around to the commissioner.
Could I make just one clarification, because it was, it was one of the questions and relates to traffic and the comment earlier. Just to address, you know, what, what we'd be taking off of 95, I think there are two points. One, it is highly unlikely that we would ever advertise this particular site on I-95. It's not, while we think it's going to, you know, be a good site, it is not something where 7-Eleven's approach would be to advertise, you know, use up a billboard on, on one particular site. So that is highly, highly unlikely that there would be I-95 advertising for, for this particular location. And then second of all, particularly with the proximity to the 95 rest areas and the lack of high-speed truck pumps at this location. It's, we do, 7-Eleven does not expect any kind of heavy tractor-trailer type use of this site. As I think Jim mentioned in his presentation, you know, you, you might get a small landscaper truck or, you know, those kind of sort of smaller service vehicles. But the type of fueling that you need for a tractor-trailer truck is not going to be in these pumps. And so if you're a tractor-trailer, you're going to stay on 95 and use the pumps at the rest area, because those are, those are what you need.
Right. I, I would agree with that, but I do think you're going to get the landscaper trucks at the crack of dawn fueling up, at least I hope you do. Okay. What else? Good. All right. Larry Warble, you want to go first, since you're thinking?
Yeah, sure. Well, we're just, I'm just wondering as, you know, since you didn't even, I think I've heard you say repeatedly, you're expecting most of the traffic to kind of be 95 come off, you know, either get gas or do whatever, and then maybe turn around and go back towards 95, which is why you didn't really even focus your traffic study in the southbound direction. That doesn't make sense to just make it a right turn only out of that driveway? Because if that Route One is, it's, it's just as hard for people to get, like the traffic there is, is, is about, is tough. About four or five years ago, Route One was repaved and re-lined. And, and basically with, it, it used to be, well, it might've always been a one-lane road. It used to be effectively a two-lane road. Now it's a one-lane road. And to get a gap to make a left turn out of that driveway, it's a waste. And now if you get four cars, five cars waiting to make that turn, maybe it just makes sense to be right turn only and, you know, let, let them figure out a U-turn down the road somewhere.
So I think the, speaking to that, we do, it, it is an existing left out of the property. We do think it's an important movement for, for access in and out of the site. Practically speaking, you may have people who, you know, if, if this is. Practically speaking, you may have people who, you know, if, if this is your, you know, becomes your gas station of choice, and you would otherwise make a left, you may choose to take a right out of the site and then go up and make a U-turn at the, at the next light, which is a possibility. But at this point, we do think that the, the left out is still something that should be maintained. And to the extent that there is any delay associated with leaving the site, frankly, it's, it's going to be internal to our property. So we're comfortable with the methodology and as, as Mike explained, you know, what, what the movements are. And so if, if there is a problem with, with lefts out, it's going to cause an issue for, you know, it would, it would be something that we would need to deal with on our property. And so that's why, you know, it, it's not gonna back up onto Boston Post Road, it's gonna be internal to the site, which is why, you know, in evaluating keeping those movements, we're, we're comfortable with those movements and the operation of the, of the site.
Can I interrupt one second? Michael, do you remember when we did Trader Joe's?
Yep.
Is, that's right turn though.
Yeah, if I may, if I recall, the Trader Joe's Shopping Center was right near the traffic signal. If, don't they have a driveway out to the side road, King's Highway, I believe it's King's Highway?
Yes, they do.
That's, that's the reason for no left turn out of that main driveway, because it's an access to a local road, and that takes you to the traffic signal in Boston Post Road. As far as this site, and I'm, you know, I'm one that tends to say no left turn when it's appropriate. Condat tends to go with left turns coming out of driveways unless it's an unsafe condition. I would suggest keeping the left turn here. Their traffic study shows twenty percent of their traffic going to and from, let's call it downtown or the center of Darien as far as the business district. It's fifty percent going towards no walk, there's thirty percent coming on and off the southbound I-95 ramps. I, I would suggest keeping the left turn movement in. If someone wants to go the way, they're gonna either do it illegally, or worse, that will go around the, I wanna call it a traffic circle, but the traffic circle at the interchange just, just east and north of this development. I, I would keep it. You have sidelines, you, you can make a left turn, and it's preferred to have someone do it safely at the appropriate alignment of the driveway as opposed to physically restricting it. I'm not afraid to restrict, but in this case, I would keep it.
You're the expert, man. Thank you. So that's, that's your answer, Larry. George, George Riley, any questions at this point?
Yeah, I'd like to focus on the southbound I-95 off-ramp and get a comment from the experts about if, if traffic does increase as a result of this project. So the southbound side of the post road, I, Route One, now has this striping that causes you to stay in the left lane to get onto I-95, or you've got to cross that lane and get to the farther southbound lane, which I consider a hazardous scene. I don't know why the state did that. And I know that they don't have any signage to prompt it, but the, but the striping certainly does that. So it strikes me as already dangerous. With increased flow, doesn't that get more dangerous?
Do you want me to answer that?
Any, any, either one of you guys.
I'll, I'll start. I understand exactly what you're saying about the modified pavement marking that that interchange. It's, it encourages two lanes to go through by ninety-five southbound from Boston Post Road. And the left turn from the off-ramp from ninety-five southbound, you have two stops, if you will. You have to stop first at the end of the ramp, and you have to stop in the median, which is difficult. They've analyzed that intersection. They showed that there were some delays, I believe, in that inner approach. But as far as changing the configuration of that interchange, and it's not seven-eleven, but even DOT, we talked about that same movement some years ago on a different project, and decided, I think with DOT, well, you know what, it was for the Mini Cooper dealership. It was decided to keep it the way it is, but it wasn't striped the way it is today. So I think as far as continuing review of this application, we'll look, we'll take another look at that.
I think that's worthwhile.
Yep. Appreciate the comment.
Does the gentleman from McAnach concur with that?
Yes, we would concur, and we did look at the, the crash data there. There were twelve crashes, so more, more crashes than we saw at the side driveway, which I think is understandable, but still results in a fairly low overall crash rate. So when we compare the number of crashes to the number of vehicles, it doesn't indicate that there's a specific safety issue, but, but certainly it is of concern, and we, I think we would agree with Mr. Galante.
Okay, thank you. Jim Rand, or Jennifer, your mic is open.
I still, am I, am I confused still? There, there's, there are no, we don't have data on the, if there's a sign on ninety-five, the increase in traffic and what that will do?
So, so, right, and, and we don't expect that there will be signage on ninety-five specifically for the site, for seven-eleven?
Why, why do you say that when Ms. Sujan's, that she needs to speak to the applicant to figure out whether that is something that they have?
And then I, I did say that it would be highly unlikely, I emailed the client who's listening, it's highly unlikely that seven-eleven would for this particular site on ninety-five. It's not, we, we expect it to be successful, but it, it's not something where we would, where the company would, would advert, would, would take up billboard space for, for this location.
Why?
Because it's not worth it.
Okay, so that is.
Of ninety-five billboard advertising won't generate, the expectation is it wouldn't necessarily be worth the return.
Okay, so that's fine. So, but Steve, or, or Jeremy, so if that's the case, because I do think that impacts our traffic, right? And if that's the case, is there something that we can put in to make a, to put, keep that in the box of what it is? Because it would really change what we're looking at here if that was, you know, we, we, we don't have the data to know what that would look like. If it's fine, if they're not gonna do it, then what we have is fine. But just, you know, if we don't, how do we, can we regulate that? How do we do that?
Jamesburg, for the record, I'll check on that, Jennifer. I'll, I'll get you an answer over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, that was it. Jim Rand, did I continue yet? I'm sorry, Jim.
No, I, I have no comments other than those that have been raised already.
And for the record, if you're keeping score, Fred, Karen Gately dropped off, dropped off the meeting, left the meeting about ten o'clock, ten oh five. She has a recent surgery, outpatient surgery yesterday, and the doctor says she's gonna go to bed by ten o'clock. There's no more questions on that. Right now is ten twenty-one. So Amy's, the client, we'd like to try to slap this for tonight and continue to another night.
Yep. The only thing I also just wanted to show you, because we didn't, we were just trying to keep in order, and, and this is obviously subject to the, to the ZBA, is we did have, and I'll, I'll do it very briefly. We did show the signage plan in the package, the, as you saw on the architectural renderings. The seven-eleven sign is here where the A1 and S is, which is that Boston Post Road. The signage there are internal window signs, and then the main signage is here where the P is at, on that landscaped pylon. It is this sign, it's a pylon sign. It is, and as I mentioned at the beginning, we are in front of the ZBA currently for a variance for the size of these signs. We are asking for, we are allowed eighteen square feet for the seven-eleven and roost, which raised the roost, which is the restaurant operator inside the, the building. So we're asking for variance on that, and then the fuel price sign is allowed to be twelve square feet. We're asking for variance to allow that to be seventeen. And then because of the location of the pylon sign, the regulations require that the pylon, both the fuel price and any kind of pylon sign, be located no closer to the street than the canopy, which would put the, any location for, any compliant location for the sign, obviously upwards of forty-five feet back from the property. So we're asking for a variance related to that. So this is just the rendering of, of that sign on the existing site. It's approximately, you know, in that location because we're not changing the existing driveway, so we can kind of place it there. But that is the, the general design. We had some questions from the ARB about the, the design, and there's some follow-up that staff is doing with respect to a question that was raised about the co-location of signs. And then obviously, the, like I said, the, the ZBA. But depending on the outcome of those two meetings in October, this, I just wanted to at least show you the sign package that would, assuming those are granted, that would be what we're requesting.
Okay, good luck with that.
And with that, that's the end of our presentation. So if there are any other questions, we obviously have a few things that are follow-up items, either related to things that we've presented and might be modified in response to the ARB or ZBA. And then I think the, the main item with request, you know, some, some questions about the lighting and the traffic counts at Birch Road.
Okay, and then I have a couple more homework items for you. You, you have two great truck loading docks at the back of the site, behind the building in front of the dumpster. We typically are gonna ask you what time these are. And you may want to respect those times, because they're not at three o'clock in the afternoon. And then also with regards to fuel deliveries, I'd like to have a sense of what time the fuel deliveries are, because I think the fuel tank on the north, northeast side of the property, and it's at the other property, if you're fueling it, you're gonna block it down. I got stuck in my gas station the other night by the fuel truck getting in there. So I did, maybe you do that at two o'clock in the morning, which is fine, but we may want to also note that for the plan.
This is Jim Bernardino. I caught the fuel delivery aspect, but it was a little garbled. The first concern regarding the crash, I believe. Can you repeat that?
The, the deliveries for regular items like Coke and Diet Coke and, and, you know, napkins and whatnot.
Okay.
And if the seven-eleven big truck or trailer comes in at two o'clock in the morning, that's a big difference.
Understandable, and we do have general information on deliveries, timing and the like, and we'll prepare something for you on the next meeting.
And then, since we're not gonna give the public comment tonight, but we, P and Z did a, we've got a letter from Mick Fletcher, which is the owner of the office building that's next to you.
Correct. And, and we got a copy of that shortly before the hearing started, so we're aware of it, and we'll, we'll, we'll likely reach out to Mr. Fletcher, but also we'll be prepared to address it at the continuation.
Okay, because in our next meeting, we're gonna open up to public comment, and we'll ask Mr. Fletcher or anybody in the public to comment on it. We're gonna hold off public comment for tonight, until it's ten twenty-seven.
Chairman, I just wanted to make sure that I'd have an opportunity to speak, because I do have some supplemental content that I would like to share in addition to the letter that I think would serve as, I think, just visual representation, and I, I do think it's important. So I just want to make sure that I'll have an opportunity to speak there.
Yes, I, I'd be pleased to be in the meeting. You know, you can either set it, you'll definitely have a chance to talk at our next meeting. And whatever comments in advance you have to send to Jeremy, that'd be great. We also have Joe Canis here, who is our time bond peer review. If you don't mind, Joe, can we use your view for the next meeting?
That's fine. You only drizzle here anyway, no thunder.
Okay, there you go. And you have, you might have some back and forth on your own conversation with the, with the site people, with the engineering people. Okay, you can do that on your own time. Okay, so we're gonna continue this hearing on Tuesday, October twenty-seventh, right before Halloween.
Right, and right after our ARB and ZBA meetings.
Good luck.
Great.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. That is our, our general meeting, I mean, our, I'm sorry, pump hearing for tonight. Now we're gonna do the general meeting. Just for the record, it is ten twenty-nine. We have a couple items on the general meeting. One is the draft of the, wait, heck, is my draft? Savage Application Number six twenty-seven, landfilling, Excavate and Regaining Application Number four eighty-two, Hans J. Meddy Truckee of the two thousand and five Irkville Kirmore Trust at ninety Penetri Point Road. We have a draft in our packets, which I can't find there. This is again the Penetri Point School. Since George Riley, the center of the screen, you wanna go first, sir?
Uh, sure. I had a, just a real nit, but in paragraph one, after the fair, following careful review, et cetera, the second to last line has the phrase "at a later time." I would move that to the end of that sentence, because I think it's a little, to say which at a later time is planned doesn't really make sense. I had one other thing where I thought I saw that the, that Mr. Gleason indicated that he expected that the DEEP would not permit a dock on the Westerly area. And it seemed to me, he didn't mean to say, or that didn't mean to say that here. Maybe that was in the minutes. Well, never mind, go on. If I find it, I'll get back to you.
Jennifer Leahy, your mic is open?
I'm good.
Jim Rand? You're good? Give me a thumbs up, Jim. You're muted. Larry Warble? Thumbs up. All right. I didn't, nothing really jumped off the page on me. I think Fred and everybody did a great job. So with, with change, with George's one change, I'd extend a motion to approve as amended or edited. Jennifer Leahy, seconded by Jim Rand, who was in favor? It's gonna be four to.
Zero to one.
Five, five, five.
Five to zero.
Characters, Karen left the meeting. Okay. Okay, next we have, do we want to change the general and pass on the approval of minutes to save time, or do we want to?
Do you mind?
It's up to you guys.
I, I wanna just do another item, which is the other business. So if we could pass on the minutes for next week, that would be great.
Except I did find what I was talking about. So I refer you to page two of the minutes where, of the September one meeting where it says, one condition that DEEP is requirement to open space parcels on the west side not be allowed to have a dock. I don't think that's what that's supposed to say, but we'll leave that to another time.
Okay. All right, thank you. I didn't read all the minutes, so we can put the. Okay, next, we have director's report. Jeremy, anything major you wanna?
Nothing to report.
Okay, passed on that. Next thing, chairman's report. I wanna keep this short and sweet. The only thing that I know, what, I'm ninety-nine percent sure to happen, the parking lot for Metro North was supposed to be on the RTM agenda last night. I think that got delayed and pulled from the agenda.
That's true.
Okay, that pulled, so I'm not really sure what Board of Selectmen's doing with that, but it got pulled from the agenda. What else? And then in your packets, you did get this town of Ridgefield letter, which is an example, and I think we touched on it last time. So that leads me into the next item. I'd like to see if we can go into other business. And I needed two-thirds majority.
To discuss the letters similarly.
So moved. I got to move. Then I got Jennifer Leahy and seconded everybody else. Okay, great. Other business. With regards to a letter from Ridgefield, we touched on this in our last meeting. Some of the other towns, I call them our peer towns, and there are five or six of them. I think there's five plus us makes it six. The chairmans or chairwoman's of those planning zoning commission, we've had these meetings over Zoom or whatever. And it's basically got to do with the proposed legislation that's going on in Hartford. There's, I think, three bills that are out there. And other towns that we're familiar with have set up subcommittees analyze and study these bills. And this letter that we got from Ridgefield is a result of a subcommittee review of it. So I would like to propose that we create a subcommittee to review bills that are, we know that are out there, give us pros and cons of the bills. It synthesizes them down. Some of the bills that I've seen are in the neighborhood of 48 pages to 70 pages. And then after we do that, then we can, I would propose that we write some kind of letter that's similar to the town of Ridgefield. So with that said, in my tenure on the commission, we have not had a subcommittee set up in seven years. So I would like to take a vote to see if it's a good idea. And then after we say yes to the commission, then we can appoint some people. So would anybody like to motion that we set up a subcommittee to study this?
Motion to set up a subcommittee.
Fantastic. We got a second from George Riley. All's in favor? Great. Okay. I would like to propose that we have Jennifer Leahy, Jim Rand, and Larry Warble on a subcommittee to study these items.
Can I take my motion back?
Sorry, Jim.
As part of our rules, we don't want to have more than three people on the subcommittee. We can't because it becomes a meeting. I personally don't want to be on it, and I think you need more than two. So if I can a motion to approve those appointees to the subcommittee, that'd be great.
You're sure that three isn't a quorum of a meeting?
No, we are sure.
We're sure of that.
Three is, three is 50% of the full board.
Right, you need more than 50% to be a quorum.
More than 50%, okay, good. Happy to move.
Thank you. George moves it. And then Jim Rand, you can second it. There you go. Okay, thank you. All's in favor? There you go. For your service. So with that setup, and I did send out an email, the charge for the subcommittee would be to review the three bills that are out there. Do some kind of pros and cons on those three bills. Also put, and we spoke about this once or twice before, if you look at the official letter, it's called HB 155132. Some people in the legislative branch call that the Anwar bill. And then the other one is 5303, House Bill 53, they call that somebody else's name. I don't know how it goes, but I just want to be able to put whoever's the author of the bill or wherever they're, the general consensus allegedly call it, that we put the names to the bill. That's one thing. And then if you read this, we can do it. And as a preface, I had a meeting and spoke with the First Selectmen about it. That First Selectmen's office is also compiling these bills. And they've already done legwork on it. The bills, I guess, and I don't know much about this, but it happens in the State House, but it, bills can start in February, it can drastically change in October. And they get numbers put on them and the numbers change. And maybe somebody, you know, me personally, in my world of business, I like to get, you know, to the second to last draft or the most recent draft and read that and be done with it. But I think in legislative world, you like to see it morphed itself. Is that what it works?
Yeah, but it's also, there's, there's already, from what I understood, from now the research that I've done, there's already like drafts that I don't, I can't seem to find, but I know some of the pivots in the language. So it would be good if, you know, Jeremy or Jamie's office can, Selectmen's office can, you know, give us some of those drafts because there was, there was the miles, like the neighboring town, adjacent towns. Things have already changed pretty significantly.
Right, I heard what, in your example, and you're almost said correct, Jennifer, I was told that the mileage started at 30 miles and is now down to 15.
Yeah, right. Where? I don't.
And with regards to what the First Selectmen's office has, it, I was quote, it's quote-unquote "in a binder." Some other people on this Chair of Chairman's Committee have sent me hot links to the bills. And one of them was even, it was, the hot link went to something that was even predated. It didn't have a number yet. It wasn't assigned a number.
Right. I saw that too. Right, right.
I'm like, you know, this must be an old draft and I didn't know what it was. So I don't know. You guys can.
Jeremy, just a quick question, or it might be what the committee will do, but I was just wondering. So for that particular part, the Affordable, I guess it's like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for adjacent towns, how much money they have in them? So like a Stanford or a Norwalk, what do they have? Because if they came in to build, you know, I'm just curious on what they have available. You know, do they have $40 million to build, you know, a new development or?
Well, that is certainly one differentiation made, that each town is in how they might fund their, this is the Housing Authority bill, which would allow the potential for housing authorities to propose projects not only in the adjacent towns, but anything within 15 miles. So the 15 miles within Darien would include Stanford, Greenwich, Canaan, Norwalk, Wilton, up to parts of Ridgefield, potentially, you know, quite a bit. It's quite a large area. And I don't know the answer, Jennifer, that's something we're trying to figure out, look into, is kind of what the thought process is on this. Certainly, without going into a lot of detail this late at night, I think one can envision, as you said, a housing authority that might have lots and lots of money saying, hey, I want to do a project not only in the town, not next to me, but two towns over or three towns over. And whether that would be the Darien Housing Authority doing a project in Ridgefield or the Norwalk Housing Authority doing a project in Stanford, you can imagine there might be a little agita over that dynamic. And I think that's something we have to consider is, I think housing authorities might be funded differently in different communities. And I'll have to check on that.
Thanks.
Okay, in terms of timing, it's now September 22nd. I'm thinking that you guys are going, the subcommittee is going to need a month to get their arms around this and report back to the entire commission. Does that sound fair?
Sure.
Timing, it was a hot button because it was supposed to be on the September, August special session. Now I'm told it's pushed back until January after the national election. So it's up to, it's up to the committee. If you guys want to report progress every meeting, that's fine. We always go to other business. If you want to hold everything back for two weeks or a month. But in just terms of timeline, if we say it's a month, you know, that gets you to October 27th, when the next summer meeting with these guys. Maybe that's a good time. But I'll let the subcommittee decide. Okay?
And whatever we can find as a staff, we'll get up, we'll email it on to you.
And then just the last, that you guys don't necessarily have a quote-unquote budget, but I got, you know, authorization kind of from the First Selectmen's office. If you want to bring in a John LeWise or you want to bring in a Glenn Chalder, or you want to bring in a consultant that does it and we have to pay those guys, this is really, really important to our town. You guys have the wherewithal to do that.
Okay, and when do we have, will we like have an opportunity for public comment, something so that, you know, we have a public forum around this?
Sure. If you want it, if you want, if this subcommittee wants to give the report in a public meeting, you're more than welcome.
Okay, so we'll talk about it and then kind of figure it out from there.
It's too big and too important of an issue that I think if we have a subcommittee that focuses on it, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay. Anything missing?
Nope.
Okay. That will be the finish of our other business. It is now 9:10:44. I think that's it, right? Their next two meetings are September 29th and October 6th.
Potentially October 6th. Definitely next week, maybe the week after, where, depends on how some applications move around. You and I will talk over the next week.
That's it. Then we enter motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There you go. Got Jennifer, we got Jim. All's in favor? I will. Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
You too.
All right. Hey, Steve, Jeremy, I'm actually traveling next week.
Thanks for letting us know, Larry. We'll make note of it.
All right.
Thanks, man.
That's one of the things I have here for us.